Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Josh, are you with us this morning?
Mike, I was waiting for my desk. Can you say something about Josh just then?
Yeah, I did. Just checking to see if you're with us and if you're good for us to get going this morning.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. You are free to go, Mike.
I appreciate that. Again, thanks for everyone's patience while we connected this morning. Today, we've essentially canceled the regular meeting of Transportation Coordinating Committee so that we could bring to you instead a training on the system that you'll be using to apply for projects for our 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. But since we are all together, I thought it would be worth our time to do some quick updates from staff and our partner agencies that may be on the call. So we built that into the agenda. For our part, in terms of updates from staff, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel McDonnell and Taylor Lee to give you a preview of some of the tip amendments that we're working on for your next meeting in March.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know what's on the radar for the March 5 TCC and March 12 TPB cycle. Right now, we're working on amendments for Electrify Nashville. We are adding CFI funds to the FY '26 construction. Thompson Lane widening in Nashville, adding FY '25 construction funds, and the Albert Gallatin Ave and Gallatin. We're bringing that back into the tip to cover a final construction costs, adding U SDBG funds to that. So those are the three we're working on now. If you have anything I missed or didn't mention, please get that to us. If you could get that to us by the deadline of February 19th, that's two weeks from now. That would ensure that we have enough time to make that into the March GPV meeting. That is all from me. Anything I missed, Taylor?
No, that's everything. Thank you, Daniel.
Great.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Taylor. The next item on the list is just a reminder to be submitting to us information from your local perspective that will need to develop the Unified Planning Work Program, UPWP. Sometimes we refer to this as the Transportation Planning Work Program. But we're looking for two things from you through, actually three things from you through the link that you see on the screen here, gnc.org/survey/UPWP. One, we're hoping that you will help us prioritize the issues that you want to see addressed through regional planning efforts using federal transportation dollars over the next couple of years, fiscal years 2020-2021. using federal transportation dollars over the next couple of years, fiscal years 2026 and 2027. The second thing we'll need from you is information about any local studies that you have. Local studies or planning efforts could be a comprehensive plan update or it could be a quarter study that you have going on that will impact your perspective on transportation needs across the region. But if you could let us know what kind of activities you have happening locally or at your agency, if you're TDOT or a transit agency, that we want to incorporate into the discussion of the UPWP. And then the last thing we'll need is any thoughts that you have about studies that we should be doing together from jurisdictional boundaries with the federal planning dollars that we receive from Federal Highway and FTA through TDOT. There is, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We do have, somehow two links got out to this meeting, so we're just trying to troubleshoot that. I think most people are on on this meeting, but we do have another link circulating around. So we have staff that will be guiding people back to this one. But just a reminder, we will need that input from you on the UPWP by the end of this month. We did receive the expectations memo from TDOT, which was put together in partnership with Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administrations, lays out the priorities that the federal and state governments would like to see us aligned with through our planning efforts over the upcoming fiscal years, as well as some guidance to ensure that there's standardization as much as possible among the NPOs in the state of Tennessee. So we're communicating in a similar way to our partners about the planning efforts that are being funded with federal dollars. We are, I'll move on to the dues estimates. Many of you have reached out to me looking for those estimates as you begin your local budgeting process. Our, we have a meeting with the GNC Board of Directors this coming Tuesday, February 11th, which is where we will present the proposed rates and estimates by community to our leadership group. Once we get through that meeting, I'll be circulating those estimates that you can use as placeholders in the budgeting process. That will include your dues estimates for the rate and then the population basis for your GNC dues as well as the NPO program dues. At this point, I probably shouldn't speculate too much on whether or not there are going to be any changes to either one of those rates, but it does look like there will be a slight uptick in the NPO dues rates, just to make sure that we're keeping up with the federal allocations. You know, year over year, we time to time see additional funds as a result of our population growth and the NPO dues policy. That was adopted back in 2007-ish, requires us to make sure that our local rate is sufficient enough to draw down 100% of those federal planning dollars that are allocated to our region. So I think there might be a change in that rate. There hasn't been a change in that rate for several years now. But you'll you'll get more information as well as your individual communities' estimates for NPO and GNC dues next week. New hires, we are very close to announcing two additional new staff members that will be joining our team in February. They will be with us for your March meeting. I think we're going to let them continue to go through their process of working with their current employers on the offboarding and the transition before we name them. But we should get those names out fairly soon, and then you'll see some new faces at the March TCC meeting, which is where we end our staff report, our staff updates this morning with just a look ahead. We do have the February 11th Board of Directors meeting. That information is available online if you're interested in listening in. And then we have the Regional Council Body meeting scheduled for the very next week, February 19th, Wednesday of the next week, where we convene the city and county mayors, business reps, and social equity reps across 13 counties in middle Tennessee. On the agenda will be information about a revolving loan fund program that we make available to small businesses and other entities that need gap financing for economic development projects. And then we've got, we'll also be bringing to that group updates and additional information about outstanding grant opportunities to fund infrastructure and social services across the region. It's also a meeting that you can, you can follow along with online if you're if you're interested. I think, Daniel, unless you've got anything else, I will open it up to see if there are any updates from our federal state partners or any members of the committee.
Nothing from me. Thanks.
Federal Highway or TDOT, anybody online have anything to share with the group? Okay, seeing none. Josh, anything to share from a TCC perspective before we see if there's anybody else online who has items to share?
No, sir, I don't have anything. I just, I didn't want to say that, I know I personally appreciate you guys doing this training and making the process hopefully really easy to get these things resubmitted. It years ago was pretty onerous having to retype everything and resubmit things. And I've been able to do it the way you guys are showing, hopefully it's going to be a lot better. So we appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome, and we're happy to make it easier. And as we update the software, we'll always do that with an eye on simplification, streamlining, and just making sure you have, you know, legacy information that you've submitted previously. We're not all the way to achieving our vision on that, but I think this is definitely a step in that direction as we get started with our 25 plant, 2050 plant update. Anybody else from the group, from the committee, who'd like to share an update or any information from your hometown? All right, well, seeing none, I will move into agenda item number four, which is the Application System Training for our 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. I do have a couple of slides here. I'm going to stop sharing my video and focus on the slides. We've included in this slideshow information that was presented at the last meeting. I'm not going to go through that again today, but I wanted to have the slides here. For anybody who wants to download the slides related to the training, they'll have the background information about, you know, where we are with the requirements to update our regional transportation plan out to the year 2050 and where to access the current plan, including the interactive database, the interactive map and database of projects, which is available at these links that you see here on these slides. And then just to remind everybody about the timeline, particularly the two phases highlighted in orange. We're in the Call for Projects now. That was initiated in January at the Transportation Policy Board meeting. That'll conclude by the end of March, and then we'll be taking your information that you submit about your projects, assessing, assessing each project for how well it is meeting our regional goals and objectives for improving transportation and the other, addressing the other planning factors that are out there. But more importantly, what's happening in April and May is that we'll be coming to your community, hopefully pulling together jurisdictions and agencies across your county together so y'all can have a conversation about what you're trying to accomplish so that we can have a sort of a comprehensive strategy for addressing transportation within each of your counties. And then through the TCC and TPB meetings, we can bring everybody across the region together to look at the total package. So there's a lot of work between January and May that is about identifying and assessing projects and just getting them optimized for consideration for the 2050 plan that we'll be doing. But it all starts with getting the information collected from you all in terms of the types of activities that you would like to see pursued over the next 25 years. The Call for Projects, the applications are due March 14th. You must have a user account to use the software. There's no charge for this. There's no sensitive information in this application. But you will need to have an account, obviously, to be able to fill out the forms and get it submitted. There is a public access account that we can promote as well. It's public access. I think, well, let me not say that out loud and get it wrong, but I can email out information. If you've got constituents or other folks within your community or city council, county commission, or other staff who maybe don't require their own account to create project applications, but want to kind of follow along in the application, there's a way for them to do that. There's nothing for them to see yet until we get through the evaluation process. But once we begin evaluating and clearing projects into the the needs list, the goal is to make that list available to anybody who's interested. So there will be a way to do that. Okay, and so for today's training, I'm going to hop over and share my my screen here in a minute so that you can see all the windows that will be popping up. I hope that's still visible. But a couple of things I'll say before we get to that point. If you have prior applications in the system, so if you're a jurisdiction, the submitted forms and uploaded narrative documents and supporting documentation for the 2045 plan, as Josh just mentioned, we have made those available in in your account. The the key piece of information you need to have here is that there's, we consolidated all the applications from each jurisdiction or agency into a single account. So if you had multiple people completing applications last time, we picked who we thought might be the most appropriate person and consolidated those applications into that person's account. And there's been a little bit of turnover since the 2045 plan. So in some cases, I'll use Gallatin, for example. Bill McCord's no longer with us, so we repurposed his account to serve Brian Rose. And so now Brian is the lead contact for the City of Gallatin, at least within the context of the application system. So all of Gallatin's applications are in Brian's account. And Nick, City Engineer, has access to that account as well through the same login credentials, so they can work collaboratively to review those applications and get them resubmitted. Now, if Nick has his own account, which he may or may not, but he can have his own account. He can complete new applications without affecting the old applications, but he won't be able to see those old applications. And then finally, you know, part of the requirement for submitting a form is to upload a narrative, which is a separate document that you'll be uploading. You're not going to be able to download from the application itself the attachments that you uploaded last time. But we have made them available to you through a separate link. This is a box drive where you can download just in a zip folder all of the documents that you uploaded last time to make it easier if we could that re, get that re-uploaded into the application forums, and you'll see what I mean here in a minute. So that's some really important information for you if you had prior applications submitted and you want to, you want your starting point to be to review those applications. But anybody, again, whether you have an account now or you want to create an account, would be able to submit a new application. If you don't have an account, the, if you go to apply.nashvillenpo.org, you should see a link there on the landing page to request or to start the process to create an account. But if you have any issues either in creating an account or accessing your existing account, your contact for that will be maxbaker, mbaiker@gnc.org. It's not important that you get logged in for this demo, but it is important that you get logged in fairly soon so that you can get familiar with the system and begin developing your applications, given the fairly short turnaround. Any questions so far? I'm about to hop over to the system itself. All right, and if you have any questions, just feel free to raise your hand. And Daniel, if you can help me spot any of those along the way.
Sure.
Give me one moment while I toggle over.
We got Christopher Lawless has his hand raised.
Hey, Chris. Hey, Chris, you're on mute, but if you've got a question for us, we're we're ready for it.
All right, can you hear me now?
I can.
Yep. Sorry, I had I had my actual computer muted as well. I am with Wilson County, and I've taken over the NPO lead for Tom Bershier as he's moved on to CTAS. So I don't know if Wilson County has any projects in the hopper, but that that file share, Apply 2045, like when I log into my account, will that show any projects that are in the pipeline for Wilson County? Or do I need to figure out what his old login would be for that, the way you worded that?
Yeah, so that's a good question, but what we have done is we've converted Tom's account to your account. So the email that I sent to you this morning with your email address and your password is how we will be able to log in. In fact, if you don't mind, I'm just going to log into your account.
Sure. You're not going to hurt my feelings.
So let's see. Everybody has the same password right now, which is perfectly fine. There's no sensitive information here, but you should feel free to change your password if you like. There's Chris's email address. All right, so you do have applications that Tom had submitted last time.
Okay.
Okay, and so this is where we'll start the training here in a minute. But are there any other questions we should attend to before we get into it?
Stacy's got his hand raised.
Hey, hey, Michael, just a question. So like if we got multiple people from TDOT that are getting our projects in there and squaring away, is it best for us to all to use this one account? Or will that really affect it if I have multiple people with access?
There are no restrictions on concurrent logins for each set of credentials. So I think the way I would look at it is if you're wanting multiple people to collaborate on previously submitted applications, it's probably better to share the login that I provided to you.
Okay.
But you might have other people from TDOT as you begin, I don't know how many of your projects are going to be carried forward versus new projects. So if you have new projects that you want to submit, then the appropriate person can just create their own login and and do that. The only caveat there is, and so you might want to think about this as you figure out your best approach, but the only caveat is, once the application is created in somebody's account, the other folks in that jurisdiction or agency can't see it until it's actually through the review process and is kind of made a little bit more public. And that's something we'll work on for the next iteration. I'd like to see the applications be visible to anybody that shares the same organization. But that's our limitation right now. So it's either way you prefer. Just know that the account that creates the application is the only account that can see it.
Okay, okay, that's good. That's that's kind of how I followed along and understood. And so that's good. So we'll just all probably use mine, then that way we can all be on, get on the same page and everybody can see what's going on there. So.
Okay, and we have tested the concurrent users, and there are no out of the box restrictions with that. But you know, if you've got, if you have, you know, if you start experiencing issues because you've got like 10 people working on it at the same time, just let us know, and we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You got it, Keith?
There we go, I got unmute. Hey, Michael, this is Keith Free. I had a question on that list of all the applications there. Is it possible to download those or print them out or something? So when I'm recreating the new projects, I can, you know, maybe look and see what I had on the old?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of ways to do that. You could probably just select this data here and copy this into an Excel or use the Excel function to extract from a website. So you could do that, like I can copy and paste that in. So that's one option. Another option, you mean just the list of projects, another option is to look at the the actual RTP document that we published that has a list of projects, I think, also by jurisdiction. The problem with that approach is going to be it'll only include those projects that made either the needs list or the physically constrained plans and not projects that you decided not to submit last time. Because some jurisdictions created an application, but just left it in draft form, having decided not to submit it. So if what you're interested in is just the list we're seeing on the screen, it's probably easier just to copy it out or, you know, use the Excel tool to extract from, and we can work with you offline too. But there's no way right now to export what you're seeing on the screen. Now, if what you're talking about are the uploads, the documents that you worked on, I am going to show you how to access those.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? These are really good questions, and I think, you know, the questions and answers are probably the best way to learn the system anyway because the the tour I'm going to give you is really short and maybe not meaningful unless you've started to try it yourself. But having said that, so we're logged in as Chris, and we're looking at the applications that Tom Bershier had submitted for Wilson County last time. One thing to note is that sometimes a jurisdiction or an agency will submit an application for a proposed improvement that they may not be the the lead entity or the project sponsor for. And that happens sometimes where, especially for county governments, where there's a state route or interstate improvement that they want to see in their community, they'll submit the project just to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. But obviously, TDOT would likely be, in some of those cases, the lead entity. So the applicant and the lead entity are two different designations that we track. And then we also look for cases where TDOT and a local might have submitted And then we also look for cases where T dot and a local might have submitted the same project. And so as we have those countywide meetings, we'll want T dot participation in each of those meetings to reconcile any duplicates that may exist through the application process. Our advice is if there is an improvement that you would like to see happen in your community, I wouldn't worry about who you anticipate to be the entity delivering the project. Just go ahead and develop an application instead of waiting around to see if anybody else is going to, to do it for you, for you all. Okay. So from here, basically, let, let me, I'm going to start from the perspective of somebody who just needs to review their prior applications. And then I'll end on, you know, how do you go about creating a new application? So I'll start with I forty, I eight forty at Stewart's Ferry Pike Interchange Lighting. This is a really old project that has been on Tom's radar for a long time. And as you click into the project, this is the form. This is a, the application form that you would see for a roadway intersection project. And if this was a new project and you clicked on the form, all this would be blank. But what you're seeing here is obviously what was filled out by Tom last time around. And I'm not going to walk you through what each of these variables mean. A lot of them are really self-explanatory, but if you need any help, the best thing to do, and I probably do this off the bat anyway, with your first project is download these instructions. So for each application form, it's the same set of instructions. Well, let me, let me say that differently. There are different instructions depending on what application form you're in, a greenways application versus a roadways and intersection application. We can tell we're on roadways and intersection at the top here. The forms may be different, but the file that gives you those instructions is the same file. So if you just download this once, so I'm just going to go ahead and download this to wherever I'm going to be working locally on my applications, I'll go to projects. Save that file. So I have it available, but this document will help walk you through all the required elements of the application form. And it will give you a definition for each of the fields that you see in the form. And in a lot of cases, it'll give you an example of an appropriate answer for that, or appropriate input for that field. Okay. So I'll go back to the form. So you complete the form. Some of these are going to be required and that's indicated on the, in the instructions. But there's a few things to know about each of these forms. You can say you get halfway through and aren't ready to submit. You can certainly save and close the application and come back to it later. And then I think when I do that, close. Okay. I haven't submitted it. So the status still says open for revision. We'll submit this one. Part of the demo, we'll, we'll see what the, how the status changes. So you can save and come back to it. The information down here just needs to be who we need to contact about the project. So it may not be you. It's going to though pre-populate. If you're in a new application, this information down here is going to pre-populate with whoever's logged in. Some cases you might want to change this contact information. If you have somebody else on your staff or within your community, who would be the better contact. Otherwise, just fill this out. And then the other thing you are required to do is to make sure that the application narrative is uploaded. And this is another quirk that I was mentioning in the slides a minute ago, is that you're going to be able to see what was uploaded. This is what's happening in the header, all these Word files. All you can do though is delete them. You can't actually view them from here. And so I'm just going to go ahead and delete these because I want to show you what happens if you don't have them uploaded. And you might want to just do this automatically. Cause you're going to want to update this information. Upload, delete the narrative. Okay. So the minimum upload is this narrative form. You've got to upload a document. It could be a Word file. It could be a PDF. Doesn't really matter to us probably which file type it is. But to get a blank form, you just click on this download narrative form. And your browser is going to tell you that it's insecure. Not secure, not insecure. Maybe it's insecure. I'm just going to copy this file over. And I've opened now the Word document that you would fill out for your application form if you're starting from scratch. So once you fill this out, we just save it and then have it ready to go for upload. If I try to submit this form, now it's not going to allow me to do so.
And then, and then I didn't help matters. Actually, I said, Kristen, did I make it worse? And Kristen said, no, actually you made it better. You kept the main calm. So that was really good of you, Diana. And I said, okay.
Hey Marty, why don't you tap Diana? Okay. So I've got the narrative uploaded and then I should be able to submit this application now. Okay. I go back to my list. It's still open for revision. Max will check in on that to see if the status is supposed to be changing to submit it or not. But note that. But it, it has been submitted, but I'd like to see the status change. You can go back to it anytime and see what you uploaded. Okay. So that's, that's what's key. So you open up the form. You make sure all the information is still correct. I'd go ahead and delete all of your uploads so that you could re-upload them, but you do need to upload that narrative in order to get the application submitted. To access the files that you uploaded last time, we've provided the link that is in the slides that I just shared, which is gnc.org file share. So you just go to that link. It's the box drive and then what I like to do is once I get here, I just sort by name and then find your community. So I'm going to go to Wilson County. And if you don't see your community, I don't see Wilson County here. So I'm just going to paginate. Or I'm going to go to the next page here. Oh, here we go. Which two? I can see them all. I don't know if Tom submitted any, I don't know if Tom had any. For now, I'm going to go and just pretend.
I don't, I don't know if he had submitted any last year or anything, because all those projects that were currently on there, those are dated for the most part. I mean, that was one of, be one of my follow up questions. Do I need to re, like, say I have a project this year and the next year comes around, do I need to resubmit projects every year to make sure they're still in the pipeline? Or once they're submitted, they're, they're in there?
You have to submit every five years because this is almost five years ago that those were done. And he may not have, he may have filled out the form, but not submitted it. And if he didn't submit it, the, maybe that's why we're missing the, his, the Wilson County folder, but we'll look into that. Looks like most of you have your folder here. If you don't, just let us know. But I'm going to just pretend that the Williamson County folder is Wilson County. And what I would probably do is just download your folder and it's going to download. You don't need to be logged in. Okay. You don't have to download, sorry, you don't have to have an account or sign in. This is downloading to my downloads. It's right here. So I'm going to just take this zip file where I'm saving the other stuff, the applications that I'm working on. Just unzip it. Here are all the files that Wilson County, these, I think these have been preserving their names, but the file naming you mentioned looks pretty cryptic for Williamson County's projects, but I did notice that there were others that seemed like they preserved whatever name that you used to upload the file. Yeah. So like, for example, we go. All these file names make sense to me. Okay. So I would just download your folder. It'll download this as a, just extract that to wherever you're working on your applications. And then when you go to fill out your form, just go find the file that you're looking for. If you are new to your community and somebody else submitted these last time and they only uploaded PDFs and you need to make changes, we probably aren't going to be able to help you access those form documents. So hopefully your predecessor kept things organized on, on your end. Of course, you could always try to convert these PDFs to Word documents to, to do what you need to do, but you're basically downloading what was submitted last time, whether it was a Word or a PDF file. Any questions here? Before I move on and demonstrate how to fill out a brand new application. I know that was a lot. This is being recorded. It'll be more meaningful as you're going through the process yourself. Mitzi.
If there's a project listed that we don't, that we are probably not going to end up pursuing with our organization, can we, or should we and can we delete a project that's listed?
You can. There's an option at the bottom of the form to delete the application. Whether you should or not, it's up to you. You know, you can keep them in there and just not submit it, or you can just keep it clean and keep your system, you know, aligned with your applications and just delete it. I do think it's important to like, if you, in terms of the judgment that you, you use to decide whether or not you're going to submit something, like if you don't need that project or it's already done, like those are really good reasons to not submit it and I would just delete it because it still exists in the last version of the software. There's a copy of the software that we have in place for the 2045 plan. So that is all there. We're not messing with any of that stuff. This is just for the 2050 plan. So if you don't need a project for those reasons, then I think deleting it makes sense. If you don't, if you're, if you're just like not hopeful that it will get funded, I would probably consider still submitting it because what we're trying to do is to demonstrate the full scope of funding needs. And so sometimes what happens with communities is, you know, you've got so many projects and you know, there's always so much money. So you, some jurisdictions will tend to not submit all of their needs. And then when we go to communicate to policymakers, how much money we need for transportation, we're kind of shortchanging ourselves. So I would go ahead and submit those projects that you need to get done, that you just don't think there's funding for, but not submit the ones that are already complete or have no longer have any interest in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the board, Daniel?
I think that's it.
Well, so that's basically the approach you'll take for your existing applications. And the category here, this third column in the table is telling you what type of application form the application is associated with. So this category is aligned to these buttons to the right. There is a different form for roadways and intersections. Well, that's the same form, roadways and intersections. And there's a form for transit. There's a form for greenways and there's a form for a program. There's a little bit of distinction I want to make between roadways and transit. So if you have a transit improvement on, that is going to modify the roadway network. So you're trying to do like a dedicated lane. I would put that in the roadways application. So roadways and intersections. So these applications are really, what are you modifying? And transit would be more like off-road facilities, like a maintenance facility or equipment, vehicles, so on and so forth. But if you're proposing to modify the roadway network, then even if it's just by PED, you're going to want to use the roadways application. These other three application categories are for off-road type of, type of improvements. Right? And so again, you're going to use the same set of application instructions. This downloads the same file. So once you download it once, you don't need to keep downloading it, but the forms are different. So if you're basically step one in creating a brand new application is just to figure out which category you need. Most of you are going to want the roadways application form. You fill it out. If you miss a required field, the system will let you know. And that, and just remember you are required to upload the narrative form. It is helpful to have additional supporting documentation. So if you are, like you've done any design and engineering work, it'd be helpful to upload those documents. Or follow up with us by way of email if they're too big and like give us a link to where they may exist online or in a, in a shared drive. Right? And then otherwise, from this point forward, it's the same process to get your application submitted as it is for the previously submitted application. So step one is just picking the right form. And you know, and then you just fill out the form and get it submitted. We will look into why the status isn't changing for this project that I just submitted for Wilson County. And then Chris, we will unsubmit it, you know, so that it's not in there officially. If you make any mistakes, just reach out to us. If you submit a project and you're like, oh, we're not really done with that, just let us know. We can, we can resend it and put it back in your hopper. Once you submit it, the way the system would typically work is that you wouldn't be able to edit, edit it again until, unless you ask for that access. And that just makes, and that just protects the integrity of the information so that as we begin our review, the data isn't changing on us. But we don't do that to prevent you from changing it. If there's a, if there's a need to do so. There are other things that, you know, we will show you about the system as you begin filling out applications, but it's not really meaningful now. But eventually you'll be able to, once we get into a project, for example, I'll show. But before I show you like what our side looks like, are there any other questions about?
Jim's got his.
Yeah. Hey, Michael, you know, say for instance, Cherry Lane, you know, we've got it in, in our previous submittals. Now with us breaking into three phases, how do we need to address that? Or does it matter?
For the RT, well, if you have anything that's going to be that has probability of getting to the tip, I would break, I would break those out. But if it's just three phases and you don't think we're going to be programming any of it within the next five years, then I would just submit it all as one and notate in your narrative that the project's being broken out into three phases for implementation purposes. But the RTP really should be kind of considering all of that one project. And we just break it into phases when it comes to the programming side.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to show you what it looks like on our side. I'm going to a different URL. In this case, this is the 2045 plan system, the database there. So as you submit projects, and I hope y'all, I hope the visibility on your screen is good enough to see this. I know I'm on widescreen and sharing the, the desktop, which can be difficult sometimes. But this is a dashboard that our staff sees that is directing our, the work that we're going to be doing to evaluate projects. And so as projects come in, as, as you submit a project, it's going to be assigned to staff planners who are all assigned different evaluation measures to apply to your project. And in my, you know, in my case, I might be reviewing fiscal constraint or something like that. It doesn't really matter. And if, but if I need to review a project, it's going to show up in my dashboard. I can see. I can see all these projects that I need to, to review. And then if I want to see what my coworkers. Still need to review, I can, I can just see, see here who's, who this project is waiting for to review, to review from their perspective. And then I'm going to go into Burkitt Road here. This is what a project page looks like. So once you submit the project. The information that you fill out in your application is going to populate. Pretty much the top half of what you're seeing here. So all the way down through. Proposed improvements. So the forms that you're filling out, you know, it's, it's triggering these check mark, check marks and populating the. Information in these fields, including project description, terminology, so on and so forth. We'll, we'll digitize the project and upload that to the map here. So it's not something you're necessarily supplying, although if you have a map, it'd be good to have it. So we're not trying to guess exactly the. Where the project is located, but we'll get that uploaded. And then we also take, once we digitize your project or geocode your project, we also run it through our models. That are looking at the project's context. So we're looking at. Your project, the, the part of the network that your project is improving, we're looking at congestion. Present day and forecasted, we're looking at traffic counts and. Other things that relate to system preservation. We're looking at crashes, we're looking at freight movement, we're looking at bike ped, public transit, planned development. Environmental, public health considerations. So these are all like external. Metrics that we are producing that define the context for your project. And it's very unique to the area around your project. And we're using this information as staff to get a sense of, all right, how is your proposed improvement? Addressing what we know about the needs in that area. And this data is just really helping us to understand what the needs might be. Now, you, you will have access to this at, at some point too, but this doesn't exist until after you submit the project and after we've run the analysis. The quantitative analysis on those projects after they're geocoded. But if I'm a reviewer, I'm looking at the screen and I'm seeing information that you submitted, I'm seeing the information from our, our data sets. And then I'm going to find my, the questions that I need to answer to analyze this project. And I'm just going to basically, some of these are yes, no, and comment and. Some of these are like, to what extent was this going to improve the, you know, the safety issues in the area? And if there are safety issues in the area, we're, we're going to, you know, document that here. So this is really a qualitative assessment of how well your project is addressing. The priorities. And then. When you do have access to this, and so you can just follow us away for now. And we'll eventually also be able to communicate with you. So if we have comments on the project that we would like for you to. Address during our review, we can tag you and you can, you know, see the entire. Run of discussion about the specific project. And, and then all, this is where we would access the files that you've uploaded. So this is something that you'll be able to see. As we get further into the process. I'm only sharing it with you now so that. As you feel like there's, as you feel like you're doing a lot of work to get the application submitted, just know that. It will have significant use to us, both at GNRC and for you within your community, once it's all put together. And then there's also a page that will show us all the projects that have been reviewed, where they're located. And we'll have the ability to query this. On several different ways. This page takes a little time to load, but here are all the projects that were submitted and reviewed as part of the 2045 plan. So that's where this is headed, but again, it all starts with you getting the applications in. And I'm going to go to. See, who is this? Nick.
Hey, Michael, I, I was, I saw that you could see the files that had been uploaded for the product on your side. But was curious about, you made mention about uploading. Different files other than the narrative. Was looking back at some of our products and. I can't tell if anything was uploaded other than the narrative, but I do see like. The same, it's referencing like the same thing 16 times on one project. It's got like the same title for it. Do we know of other? Did I just put kind of a generic title on it as, as the upload or were there 16 files that? Bill may have uploaded?
Well, let's look at a couple of things for you real quick. So I'm going to go into, go into here. So these are all the files that. Bill had uploaded and they have pretty well-preserved file names here, but let me log into your account real quick. Do you know Brian's email address?
Brian, B R I A N dot rose. At Gallatin, T N. Dot G O B. Like the first one, for instance, is the one I was looking at, which that one has multiple files too, but the first one has 16. Files that all have the same name.
Yeah, I think.
Bill not knowing how to use the system.
Yeah, we're talking, Bill McCord probably just wasn't confident that he was getting the file uploaded or something. But yeah.
But you're saying all this needs to be cleared out and a new one uploaded anyways.
Yeah, because it's been five years. So I imagine this, all this has changed. Like the narrative definitely needs to be deleted, definitely delete that. If, if you have like old engineering documents and nothing is new, like you can just leave them here. It's been just resubmit as, because they're already attached. But most of you are going to want to. Everyone, everybody needs to delete the narrative and then most of you are going to also want to delete these other files. And if they're duplicates, it's just because he probably. I don't know what his circumstances were on this project, but he just kept, he kept re-uploading it.
Gotcha. And so this is the only place that we can upload files?
That's right. It's per, the files are associated with the individual project. So you would upload it as part of the form. If there's ancillary information that just doesn't feel right for the form, then you can just email us. And we can figure out how to get that information from you.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we're coming up on time, but are there any other questions? Where we hop off?
Yeah, hey, Michael, and I'm sure I'm the only one curious about this. But on that deadline of March the 14th, is that, is that a hard deadline or is that something? That, you know, that it's got to be by then. I, I think we can get everything taken care of, but it's just, that, that's going to be here before we know it.
Yeah, it is, it is a hard deadline in the sense that like for sure, if you are, if you have a project that you know, like. Is going to really benefit from federal funds, state funds, or if it's originally significant route where you know there needs to be federal engagement, like. Really need to get it in. I will say now though, we will probably have like a. Another window of opportunity after those county meetings. Because we might have some ideation through those conversations that lead to additional projects being. You know, brainstormed essentially. So, yeah, I mean, it's not like, if you miss that, it's not like it's going to be impossible to submit it after that date, but. To feel confident that it's truly being considered for the fiscally constrained plan, that'll be, that'll be the deadline. And just because we're on, you know, we've got to get our draft plan to the state and feds, the federal agencies for review. You know, just. You know, probably shortly after those, those county workshops.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. And, and I did, I did just download all those files, how you were showing to do that. And it all did, it all worked fine. So I was able to get all those files out of there. Thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't practice any of this before, before today. It was probably obvious to you, but. So I, I may have picked a couple of examples that, you know, just looked odd, but it is just whatever was uploaded. So. You know, some communities' folders may be cleaner than others. Either way, if you need any assistance from us, just reach out. The best contacts for this system are going to be Max Baker for technical issues. And then if you have questions about the process. Then Daniel is your best contact. And then if you have questions about your specific projects, particularly those projects in the short term. Then Taylor is your best contact. And in all cases, it helps to. Copy me on those emails and I can just make sure everybody has what they need to get back to you. And I'll follow up with that information. After this meeting with a recording link and then the, the contact information. Depending on what you need. Any other questions? All right, Josh, that's what we have for the group today. I'll toss it back to you.
All right. Well, does anybody else have any, any other? Questions or comments or any other items you'd like to discuss? Well, here now, Michael, I guess we're adjourned.
Awesome. Well, I just reiterate, getting in this system as soon as possible, just at least get comfortable with it so that you're not experiencing those technical issues in March. Reach out if you need anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Have a great Wednesday. Yep. Have a great Wednesday.